Start with a pledge.
I'd like to lead this to the House of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under our oath of justice for all.
Christina, would you do the quorum?
Fish, Johnson. Cole. Lawrence. Marshall. Steen. Mayor Buck.
Here. We do have a quorum, so we will look for a approval of the agenda or any additions or corrections.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We have the minutes from the August 1st, August 5th, and August 12 meetings. I'll look for a motion on that.
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We have claims on pages 20 to 22. Got a chance to look them over, I'll look for a motion on that. Motion second to approve the claims. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Have the consent calendar. We have a couple wage adjustments. And... On pages 23 and 24. Motion second to approve the consent calendar. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Visitors and timed items, this is an opportunity for anybody that would like to discuss any issue with the council, whether it's on the agenda or not on the agenda. If you're here, you'd like to address something that's actually on the agenda, you might want to wait until then, but you can do it now either way. We limit it to five minutes and ask you to step up to the podium and give your name and address. Does anybody want to visit with the council about anything? Come on up. Yep. There you go.
Hi, my name is Sawyer Van Horn, I live on 7th Avenue and I just had a question for the council. So I was just, you know, I'm curious, you know, we hear a lot of issues, you know, people having a lot of issues about certain things and then, but you know, in the 2022 spring election, Mr. Mayor Harry Buck only won with 500 votes in a town at 12,000. So how do you, I'm just curious, how do you increase the voter turnout? How do you get people wanting to vote, vote for council members, mayor, you know? Because usually it's, you know, people more excited about, you know, statewide level races, federal races, how do you get people excited about local races?
Good question, I wish I knew. If I had the answer, we'd have had it done by now.
Can I take a stab at it?
Sure.
Encourage your neighbors and friends to get out and vote, we just had a legislative election also and I think we might in our area, might have hit a little bit under 10%. And it's just, there's nothing that's driving people to vote. And if you can get them out there, that would be a good project for you.
Anybody else?
I think I would say too is we don't have anybody to run for council or mayor. I was on, excuse me, well, I mean against us. Yeah, so yeah, getting more people involved all the way around would be a good thing, so.
Come up with any good ideas, let us know.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to visit with the council or anything right now? Okay, we'll move on. We have a public hearing, appeal hearing for the home occupation at 504 North Teton. This is an opportunity here for us to hear the appeal and then our choices would be to, to stay with planning and zoning recommendation or to overturn planning and zoning recommendation or to send it back to planning and zoning for reconsideration.
So this is an appeal of a P&amp;Z met last month sometime denied a home occupation, the applicant wants to run a in-home consignment shop for women's clothing and accessories out of the basement of her home. So planning and zoning denied it, they did not explicitly state a reason in the motion, so what was in their heads, we can assume but can't point to something exactly, so hopefully you all watched the YouTube video or listened to it or talked to P&amp;Z and got their thoughts. But so, an appeal, basically you act as, somewhat like an appellate court would, that you listen to what was presented before, you can't listen to anything new, it's just a rehearing of what was presented before. And as Mayor Buck said, you can either overturn P&amp;Z, you can agree with them, you can send it back to them for reconsideration. If you do send it back to them for reconsideration, I think it would act as if they were hearing it anew, so at that point you could probably get some new information. So, those are a couple of options, so you all know kind of the history with home occupations, kind of where they draw the policy line. So, if you have any questions about that, I can try to summarize it, but again, their thoughts are kind of their own.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. Hi, my name's Norma Spanton, I live at 504 North Teton Drive, and that is correct, I am wanting to have an in-home consignment shop. And the idea for this in-home consignment shop actually came from when I was working at, well, it came a long time ago when I was a little girl and used to go to an in-home consignment shop in Orange City, Iowa with my mom, but then carry on over like 35 years later. And while working at Dillard's, I saw a lot of beautiful things there at that store. And I just had a real heart for the fact that there's a lot of beautiful things that a lot of people can't afford. And I know that here in town, we don't really have anything like that, and I wanted to make something available to all people of all financial backgrounds, specifically women and young girls, available to them to purchase. I feel that every young lady and every woman should have the opportunity to feel beautiful. So I wanted to start in my home and probably just for only a year to see if it would be something sustainable. And the reason for that is because I did do some checking into some of the area open facilities and a lot of them want three-year leases. And I don't have the sustainability for that at this point. I do have a bit, but not completely. And I still have to work full-time, so this is not a full-time venture. My original idea was to just do Wednesday evenings from 6 to 8 and then Saturdays from 10 to 2. I did tell the commission though, that I was open to if they did not want me to do hours, that I was open to by appointment only. Because one of the concerns that they had was parking, which is an absolute legitimate concern. So if we did park, you know, by appointment only, I have some ways to control that. Although there is, you know, some parking and I can explain that if you'd like some information. And when I went in, I felt, and this could be entirely wrong, I just felt like maybe some people had their mind made up before I came in and I could be wrong. But it was either Rob or Brian that had brought up that, before I even spoke, he had said, correct me if I'm wrong, and he had asked, I believe, planning and zoning, didn't we just strike down somebody who wanted to do retail in their home for selling guns? And yep, that's how this started and they said, well, yes, we did. There's a difference between selling dresses and guns, in my opinion, but that's just my opinion. And then after things got talked about, and I honestly have to tell you, I have tried to do everything very by the book. I got my tax ID number, I'm wanting to do this very legitimately, I don't like to do anything undercover, so to speak, or what have you. So this was my last dotting my i's, crossing my t's. And so, then, so then after that was brought up kind of towards the end, then Alicia Thiel goes, well, the next thing you know, then people all over are going to be wanting retail licenses. The next thing you know, they're going to be selling jet skis out of their house. And I just, I guess I stood there dumbfounded, I didn't know what to say anymore. So, I mean, I guess I had some questions really, I can, I was willing to compromise on no hours and just do by appointment only. But I kind of was curious, you know, what is the difference in if you're running, say you have a Lou LaRoe business and you have people coming into your home for that or Mary Kay? And I know a lot of people who have Mary Kay businesses and people come to their homes specifically, they don't really do a lot of things, you know, out at different people's homes like they used to back in the 80s and 90s. You know, and I want to bring sales revenue, sales tax revenues to Brandon, I don't want it to be forever in my basement. My dream is that I don't have to have a full-time job and that this can be my full-time job. But I'm just trying to be as fiscally, as responsible as I can. The last thing we need is another store in Brandon to open and then close its doors. Again, we want our city to look like we're very, our businesses are solid. To see one come up and then shut its doors again, to me, that's not what we want our city to see or people around us to see. You know, and, you know, and they said to, because my neighbor next door has a service business. And so I guess, you know, I realize with service business too, you can control the amount of people that come in for service as opposed to retail. But again, if I'm willing to do by appointment only, well then, so can I. And, I'm just looking at my notes, one of the big things that, again, it was either Brian or Rob said, well, we just want to protect Brandon. Well, so do I. I would never want anything bad to happen, so again, if it's a parking issue, I can control that, you know, again, by saying, if you don't want me to do hours, I don't have to. I can do it by appointment only, but there is ample parking, if we, even if I did do hours, there's parking in front of my home, but then also I live by a church and off of Teton and, thank you. There is that church that that is public parking area over there, I do believe that they could park. But I just honestly don't feel like I'm ever going to have tons and tons of people parking. I just don't see it as that, I don't ever see more than probably four or five people at the shop. It's small, it's not, I can't fit more than that there. Also, you know, retail it does, it takes many different shapes and forms. So I guess I feel like too, and again, this is just my feelings, but I feel like just to not give retail licenses or permits out to anybody because it's retail across the board, that's a bit unfair to me, again, that's my feeling. But, yeah, so I'm kind of curious too, you know, the concern was raised, you know, that everybody's going to be coming in wanting retail licenses. How many have been asked for in the last two years? Is it a lot? I don't know. But I guess that's where I'm at, I would humbly ask you to reconsider. I have a lot of women, a lot of women from Brandon, I have about 28 consignors, all from Brandon except one. So this is also allowing those women to make a little extra money as well.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Understanding that we can't hear any new information.
Right.
Okay, and so, my thought is if you have new information that you've figured out since then, you know, the option would be to send it back.
So if this worked, you're talking about doing kind of a beta site in your house and then if it was successful, you'd be looking at a true brick and mortar?
Yes, there's actually a couple that I'm looking at.
Would it be possible, if this can, went back, would you be acceptable for a sunset on the conditional use, is that something that we can do?
Can you explain that to me?
Well, make it conditional to a year or 18 months.
Absolutely.
And then, and then, okay.
Absolutely.
Other questions?
My, I guess my other, after, yeah, kind of listening and watching the July 18th meeting, so it sounds like you have maybe four spots in your driveway and then possibly around three in your front, right out in front of your boulevard area. So you've got ample, some ample parking, if we did, if we did do some sort of appointment only, evenings and you, if I remember right, you mentioned that nothing maybe after 8 o'clock at night.
No, never.
And then maybe just whatever, a weekend, a Saturday or even a Sunday, something like that too.
Well, Sundays are pretty precious to me, so probably not Sunday, but yeah, Saturdays.
I don't know what your guys' thoughts are, I know my wife went to an event here in Brandon three weeks ago, where this event not only had a huge amount of people there, or huge, as many as you can get in this home, and they sold stuff, and was allowed in Brandon, so I guess I don't, I don't see the under, of why we wouldn't allow something like this, especially if she's willing to do, you know, appointment only, so she can kind of, in the neighborhood, can kind of dictate on how many people are coming and how much parking spots are being taken up. I just hate, I know it puts us in a rough spot, but I feel like there's other businesses in town, now does that business, has that, did that business come before us? I have, or P&amp;Z, I have no idea, maybe they did, maybe they didn't. But we all know what happens, happens in town. And it seems like for someone that is in Brandon, wants to provide a service in Brandon, is willing to do appointment only, in my opinion, I don't feel like that's an issue.
I don't disagree with anything you're saying, however, I don't like necessarily going against planning and zoning, I mean, they're appointed by us to do the job. And I think if there's new information, that it would be good, in my opinion, to send it back for reconsideration.
I agree, I mean, we all know they're good people on that, it's not, nothing against them, at the same time. I mean, we're here to do a job and I'm not trying to, if I'm hurting their feelings, I'm sorry, but I feel like I'm a rational guy, this seems like a rational opportunity, I don't need to send it back to planning and zoning, in my opinion. But, so.
You really only have three choices as the council, you can affirm the P&amp;Z's decision, you can override it, but you can't place conditions on it. You can just say, yes, it's permitted, or you can send it back to planning and zoning with some recommendations.
So we can't override it and add conditions, P&amp;Z would have to do that.
I don't, I don't think so.
Would she, if?
Can I modify my request and say I'd like an 18-month or a 12-month?
This, like Patrick said, this is an appeal, that's new information. So, the council's fairly limited in what you can decide on the appeal. I mean, it makes perfect sense to send it back to planning and zoning to have them place some conditions on it, whether it's by appointment only or certain days or time limit. But I don't think the council can do that.
If she goes back, does, I know this, the process takes a little longer, does she, does she have to incur additional fees by doing this?
So.
The council's sending it back. Okay, so if the council sends it back, just bear with me just a second, if the council sends it back and they deny it again, she has the right to appeal the second decision with conditions, so.
That, you answered my question. That's right.
Any other discussion?
I'm going to make a motion, did you have?
No, I was just going to agree with what you guys are saying here, I think you're doing the right thing, you know, we talked about the top wire, we talked about the Cincy, these parties that are going on. You want to do it the right way. I, I'm kind of aware, you know, I've heard that there are other people that are selling things like running eBay type stores out of their home, you know? And we're not seeing any sales tax revenue from that because they don't have a tax ID, they don't have a license, they certainly don't have a conditional use permit. I like that you're trying to do the right thing. I recall in the case of the individual that wanted to sell the firearms out of his home or do the, you know, do the wrap on the firearms, that type of thing. There were a number of residents that came and spoke against that, just firearms in the neighborhood, right? We didn't see that at P&amp;Z, we don't see that here tonight, I feel that they're different circumstances.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion to send it back P&amp;Z with recommendations to take a look at a sunset. If you want to request a year or 18 months, I think that would be a good thing. I don't know how anybody else is on the appointment thing, I'm not all that concerned about the appointment thing. You're going to have limited days, maybe establish what those days are and.
I'd recommend you bring in some neighbors.
I can, absolutely, they just couldn't make it, so, and I've got other cheerleaders as well.
They couldn't talk tonight because it's new information, but when you go back, if you go back, so we have a motion. Motion second to send this back to planning and zoning for reconsideration. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming in. Old business, we have the second reading of ordinance 712, amending that chapter 17-4-5, this is moving the recording time from 90 days from 160.
Correct, from cannabis establishments.
Motion second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Committee reports, golf course. We have a hiring of seasonal employees.
Madison Johnson in the lounge and beverage cart.
Motion second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Parks and Rec, you got the work report on page 39 and 40. And we've got seasonal employees there.
Same thing, it's that time of the year, we're losing our seasonals, so we would like to hire Russell Rude and Scott Minaj for watering flowers on Holly.
Look for motion. Motion second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Flowers look nice by the way, good job. Public safety, you've got the fire report, 49 calls last month. And we've got a block party application, 300 block of South 8th, this is something they have done in the past and recommended do pass, I believe by.
Correct, all of the affected property owners have signed off on the application.
I'll look for motion. Motion second to approve, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Administration. Brandon Valley hardwood challenge raffle, unless somebody has an issue with it, we can just approve it and move on.
No action necessary.
And we've got the DA Davidson letter of engagement for 2024 sewer revenue bonds, page 47 to 54. In the backup material, I'll look for a motion on that or comments? Motion second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. And we have resolution 29-24 authorizing the sale of 3.25 million sewer revenue bonds on page 55 through 87, I'm sure you all read it.
Yes, this is for the Forest Main Phase 1 that we're doing with, along with City Asu Falls, so they've started that project, we'll have bills coming in shortly, so.
Okay. Motion second to approve resolution 29-24, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Streets, work report on page 88, we've got the core phase 2B project pay application, pay application number four. Pages 89 to 93, I'll look for a motion on that. Motion second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. They're finally making some pretty good progress, it's a quick reading. Okay, we've got the Brooklyn Industrial Park Mill and Overlay project. I'll look for a motion on that. Any comments?
No, this amendment is just for DGR, for some of the design work and for some construction admin, since we added in the Mill and Overlay into this project for Aspen Boulevard, as well as the replacement of the crosswalks on Holly.
Okay. Motion second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Water and sewer, water treatment plant, project pay application.
Just pay application number 21, so it's moving right along.
Motion second to approve the water treatment plant pay application number 21, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Water care, motion carries. Water treatment plant change order.
So one quick comment on the change order, page 106, there is a small change, we were going to increase the days of completion for seven days, and we need to change that to nine. And then Ben is here from AE2S and I'll let him run through the different items that are within this change order.
We've got five items in this change order, start, I'll just walk through them, if you have any questions or ask at the end there. RFP 40, that is adding or replacing, sorry, some existing filter effluent valves in the existing plant and replacing some conduit and cable in the effluent channel. This is brought up by city staff, want to replace those while we have a contractor on site, so it's an addition to the project. Replacing those just in place with same valves, they're just aging and showing some wear and tear, getting those replaced so they can get another 20 plus years out of them. Next one, RFP 41, that is expanding the driveway to the water plant. Driveway's getting replaced on the project, but looking at widening it now a little bit to the north side and also widening it to the south side, extending all the way over to the parks driveway from the parks building there. That in addition to adding a new storm drain sump there, the city has indicated there's some drainage issues, there's a little drain, tiny drain inlet in there that always gets filled up with mud. It's always kind of soupy and muddy there, so this should take care of that whole area and kind of keep it cleaned up by the water plant driveway. Next one, RFP 42, that is changing out a couple of pipeline tees, there were ductile iron in there, we're changing those to schedule A to PVC to match the rest of the piping. The schedule A just works better with the RL permeate that's being pumped for longevity. RFP 43, the next one, is removing the geotextile fabric that was shown in the detail underneath the site concrete. Our civil engineer took a look at that again and compared it also with Sioux Falls details for similar streets, you know, this isn't a heavy interstate or anything like that. And we opted to remove that as it wasn't shown in Sioux Falls details, and he didn't think it was needed in this application, so we could get a deduct on that one. And that, if you're not familiar, it's just kind of heavy duty geotextile fabric that would go underneath the concrete on the site paving. The last one is adding an additional isolation valve on the RL permeate. The last one is adding an additional isolation valve on our permeate line, going back to the clearwell. This will allow us to isolate that line. Kind of gotten into conversation now about startup. We're going to start different systems and test them and where we can send water before it is sent out and found the need to have an isolation valve in that pipeline. So it's not going to clear well while we're testing the RO system. And down the road, it'll allow them to always isolate this if they ever need to to test or troubleshoot the system. That's the four items in this change order. Any questions?
I don't. I'll look for motion. Motion a second to approve the plant, the water treatment plant, change order number seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. And we have Westview Estates Drainage Engineering Proposal.
Yep, this is a proposal with DGR. This would be one of our rehab projects. So once this project's completed, then this area would kind of move into our maintenance project area so we could upkeep it. This is probably one of our worst areas in town as far as keeping up on the drainage part of it, just because there's a lot of, a lot of trees in there. And so it kind of makes it impossible to mow it and maintain it for, on the city staff level. So this is one that we want to kind of get designed out and probably bid and do yet this fall.
Any questions, Tammy? I'll look for motion. Motion a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. We don't have any new business, but I would like to move us into executive session.
To discuss personnel.
To discuss personnel. So, thank all of you for coming.
Need a motion.
Need a motion to go into executive session. Motion a second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, guys.